This is the April 17th regular meeting of the Durango City Council. Uh, may we have a roll call?
Councillor Bettine?
Here.
Councillor Brooke?
Here.
Councillor Youssef?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Marbury?
Here.
Mayor White?
Here.
Who is coming in to pick up the Arbor Day?
It's coming here.
Okay.
First item of business, as you might have guessed by my walk into the podium, is a proclamation. This concerns Arbor Week, April 16th to 20th, April 2018. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And this holiday, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. I will put an insert, I believe that's the Nebraska National Forest, which really looks strange as you probably cross the plains. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can cause, can reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, encourage economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And trees, wherever they're planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Durango, Colorado is a city located in a natural setting upgrade beauty, and whereas Durango, Colorado has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue its enhancement of its urban forest. And whereas the Parks and Recreation Department of the City of Durango will assist citizens, businesses, and organizations in making Durango a more beautiful place to live and to do business. Now therefore, I Dick White, Mayor of the City of Durango, do hereby proclaim the week of April 16th through the 20th of 2018 to be Arbor Week, and I urge citizens to celebrate by planting trees and by participating in Arbor Day ceremonies to be held at the Community Recreation Center on Friday, April 20th, 2018 at 10:00 a.m. Kathy Metz will accept this.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Just like to thank you for your final proclamation, Mayor. And also, this is our 38th day, or 38th year Arbor Day celebration for the City of Durango. Not many communities have achieved that standard, and just wanted to let the council know that. And certainly welcome anyone, I know Councillor Youssef is going to be coming on Friday, to see some great performances from our area students. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, and thank you for the great work that you and your department and your arborists do for us. The next item on the agenda, the annexed item, is a review of the consent agenda.
Item 4.1 is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of March 20th, 2018. 4.2 is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of April 3rd, 2018. 4.3 is discussion and possible action concerning Resolution R. 2018-11, authorizing an additional appropriation to the Capital Projects Fund for the construction of the Moore Park Shop. 4.4 is final approval of ordinance O. 2018-6, amending Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Durango related to the use, placement, and security of trash containers, and the use of wildlife-resistant containers to minimize conflicts with wildlife in the city, and declaring an effective date. And item 4.5 is final approval of ordinance O. 2018-7, vacating and abandoning a portion of the public right-of-way of East 30th Street, and declaring an effective date.
Is there any member of the public who'd like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Any member of the council?
Mayor, I'd like to remove 4.3.
Any others? And I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 4.3.
Second?
May we have a roll call?
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Councillor Brooke?
Yes.
Councillor Bettine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Marbury?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, Mayor, I was, had some questions for Kathy Metz concerning the additional funds. I'd like to know who the contractor is, and what was the problem that you needed more money?
So, um, thank you, Councillor Marbury. The City of Durango budgeted $2.3 million for the Moore Park Shop, which is the Park Office Center at Greenmount Cemetery, in 2017. And since that time, uh, we have added additional staff to our department to require an enlargement of the actual office space. So that grew from the square footage that we proposed in 2017, from 3,700 square feet to 4,100 square feet. So that was a fairly significant change. And then the other thing that happened is actually the shop was reconfigured. We originally had proposed for that shop to be attached to the building at 5,760 square feet, and then we found that it fits better on the site to have a heated space that's 3,600 square feet, and then a separate unheated storage building that's 1,500 square feet. So that was actually a reduction in, in the cost of the project. Um, the contractor is Non-Construction, they have done a number of projects in Cortez, um, and that, uh, for the city and, uh, organizations in Cortez, and done a lot of metal buildings, which is what the park shop is going to be. And so we felt that they were highly qualified. They came on as a general contractor-construction manager in January of this year, um, after being drawn to a 60% level. And they gave us very quickly estimated cost for the project that was well above our adopted budget. And so we have been working with the design team, engineer, and architect, as well as the contractor that's going to be building the building to reduce the scope. We brought it down about $200,000 from his original cost, and we are still in a place where to complete the building, as we are proposing, it will require an additional $240,000 from Conservation Trust funds. These are lottery monies that are given to the city based on our population.
So the project's going to be a $2.5 million project, is that what you're telling me?
So yes, it started out, correct, it started out as a $2.3 million appropriation in 2017, and we're asking for 240 additional, and so it would be a $2.5 million total project cost.
It just seems like a lot of money, and I recognize her square footage. Um, and I haven't seen the plans in some time. It's been too long for me to remember, but I was, I was a little shocked, to tell you the truth, that, um, it, a $2.5 million project seemed almost over the top to me as a resident. Um, where is your biggest expense?
You know, second work is a very large expense. It's about 21% of the budget, and of the total is $472,000. So what's happening is as the road comes into Greenmount Cemetery, Cemetery Road, as it comes into the site, it has to be relocated because the building itself needs to be accessed in a different manner to allow good accessibility to the crematorium, which is in the back of the structure, that's a facility that's used up there. And, um, and so that cost, we did work, that was one of the project elements that we worked on extensively with the design team to bring that down. Um, so it was a better access, but the site costs are high.
So that's, you meant, in the staff report, you talked about the road. That's, uh, the, the road, the cemetery road isn't going to get any improvements, it's just the road from?
Just the top of the cemetery into the new building area, yes. So the whole cemetery road would not be realigned and redone, but just the upper portion that's entering the new shop area. So one of the things you might be interested in is sort of the square foot cost of these improvements. I know that Councillor Broke is well aware. Office itself is about $216 per square foot, which is pretty standard in the industry. Um, the heated shop portion is $100 per square foot, and then the unheated storage facility is $61 per square foot. And so we are aware that this project is vitally important for our operations, and what we want to do is make sure that we build a building that will last for the next 50 years, as the current shop has. And so we know it's really important to do it right, because we'll get one, one shop to do this correctly for our staff.
So you're metal, you have a metal shop?
Correct.
So what is the, um, materials being used in the office, the 4,100 square feet?
I'm going to have Scott McLean, who is our Assistant Parks Director, come and assist with some of these answers. He's the project manager for this project.
So the 4,100 square foot office, it will be stick-built, so bumper-built, plant roof, under the authority of it. A traditional stick-built office.
What exterior skin?
Uh, we're looking at Starkoff.
Well, I, I share Councillor Marbury's, uh, confirmation, I guess, about it, but in a, you know, but it does sound like when None came, came on, was hired as a CMGC, that we were made aware of it, and you've been negotiating ever since. You know, sort of disappointed, we've been out doing this for a long time, about three years now, different iterations, and, uh, you know, it would've been nice one to know that we, we're going to have this evening to, to add to the budget to, um, and, or at least know a little bit more about what the factors were that led to this, and so we don't have to air those in this forum, so. Uh, so next time, let's do that, so. But, uh, I think, uh, for those raw costs, the 216, the 102, and the $61 a square foot, absent of any site cost, I assume, those are just raw costs for the building, those seem pretty reasonable to me.
And I would observe that if, you know, given those numbers, it's almost 300,000, and the increment is less than that.
And the other thing that we're trying to do to save funds is we're looking to do the demolition of the existing office building ourselves, because we are good at landscaping and irrigation, we're looking to do that internally, and actually, uh, doing our own finished work in the interior portion of the shop. So we're trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible, because we know that this has been a sensitive issue with the council, and, uh, appropriating the funds for this project, and we're really trying to do it as economically as possible.
It, it's a choke for me, Kathy. For a project to be two and a half billion dollars is just a choke. Um, it goes against my brain. I, I've heard, you know, I hear your numbers, but I find it staggering amount of money. I'm glad that there's some money in the conservation fund, otherwise, you know, you're going to be pinching pennies. And I would like to see this project, if, if at all possible, come, come in under this budget. What else can you do to, um, make a difference in this kind of money? It's just a, I can't believe it's a two and a half billion dollar project, it's just...
And certainly, we, uh, do have contingency built into that number, so it don't have to come to the City Council. And, um, any funds that are remaining go back into the fund balance, uh, the half cent sales tax. And so, um, we anticipate that it will not go above this, and certainly, any remaining funds will be eligible for other projects.
Well, I have been increasing the sales tax lately, um, shopping in, locally in Durango. So I, I'm going to encourage other people to do the same thing. Uh, I'm glad there is money to do this, I know it's long overdue, don't get me wrong. It's just staggering amount of money for a shop, an office, and a storage building, and one that's even unheated, so. Okay, Mayor, I guess with that, I will move to, um...
It's Resolution 11.
It's 2018-11.
2000, I'll move to approve Resolution 2018-11.
Second. Now we have a roll call.
Councillor Broke?
Yes.
Mayor Mo, Mayor Pro Tim Marbury?
Yes.
Councillor Bettine?
Yes.
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
Uh, moving on, the next item is public participation. Uh, this is an, um, item that's reserved for, um, individuals to address issues that are not otherwise open for hearings on the agenda. Uh, we ask individuals to restrict their comments to five minutes, and, um, we do understand that there were people planning to bring presentations tonight, so perhaps I should turn it over to Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes, um, Doug Snyder is here from the VOA, so Mr. Snyder, if you and your architect want to come to the podium and introduce yourself and explain your project to our community.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council, City Manager, City Attorney, it's nice to see all you back in Durango. I'd like to provide just a little brief recap on our proposed project of Three Springs, update you on our progress, and our timeline to move project forward. Here's a map showing the Three Springs vicinity and the relationship to downtown Durango. And the subject property is highlighted in yellow on Wilson Gulch Road. It's about three blocks from the Mercy Regional Medical Center, and we've been working on this site for the last year. We think it's a, a really great site for a senior affordable project, proximity to the hospital, the linkage to the open space, and other amenities and uses in the, in the area. We propose to build 100 new senior affordable income and rent-restricted units over two phases, using a low-income housing tax credit, that will be issued by Colorado Housing Finance Authority. In which, to the right, with the color, would be Phase 1, with the blue being the apartments on the first level, and the orange being the amenity and office areas, and then the corridor down below the building. We're looking at three and four-story options. In front of that would be a terrace, gardens, open space. And then we have, uh, surface parking, we think it's a great orientation of the site and the building, because that's on the south side of the building, so, um, the snow and ice will melt off, et cetera. And then, uh, a couple of years later, if this project goes well, we lease it up, we come back and do a second phase till left on an inch. Here's a little detailed shot of the amenity area and office area. And here's a conceptual rendering of a three-story building. Again, we're looking at four-story as an option. Just a little profile, some of the details of the project. It will be for seniors and age-restricted, age 62 and up. Two phases, 100 units. Primarily be one bedrooms, with a few two-bedroom units included. Indoor and outdoor amenity areas. And it'll serve area median income 30% to 60%, which is what the family project that's under development, recently been built. They're catering to the same, same AMI level, just family clients. Ours is senior, and as you all know, we have Cedar View 1 and 2 senior properties here in Durango. And those are 0 to 30% AMI, so there's a distinction in the AMI level that we're going to open up a new market. We think the market for these seniors is, is very strong. The income range across 30 to 60% AMI, including one and two bedrooms, is roughly $15,000 to $35,000. Affordable rents come in at $370 to $930. Those are indexed annually by HUD, the data just came out, so those are the current figures. We'll provide service-enriched housing, as we do in all our projects. We'll have a dedicated service coordinator office, and a half-time service coordinator in Phase 1. Then we do Phase 2, we'll staff the second half-time position, creating one full-time position, but that person will coordinate services for the residences internally and the external partner agencies. Having Cedar View Properties here in Durango, we have a leg up on that very important piece. And then, uh, our proposed partners are CHAFPA, State Division of Housing, Homes Fund, Colorado Housing, excuse me, the Colorado Health Foundation. Just briefly, some of the strengths we bring on the project in Durango. We're a national organization and brand, and we're a long-term owner. Essentially, in perpetuity, the building gets aged, we'll go get new financing and update the interiors in common areas. Hopefully, we have a good reputation here in Denver as a community member. We have experience with seniors in Durango. Uh, nationally, we have strong relationships with lenders and investors to secure the best possible terms that we can get for these types of projects. And, uh, we have expertise in compliance and managing these properties. And then we have strong experience in developing affordable housing. Little time, timeline recap. We applied last summer for our first request, we got feedback from CHAFPA in September. Asked if we could put a few more units on the site, and for, for the cost discussion, they looked really closely at costs, and they asked us to see if we could sharpen our pencil a little bit, which we're doing, in the process of doing so. Our second request, we're going to lower our cost per unit, which they look at very closely. These are coveted resources, so, um, that's what's required. We're here in town having a couple of information sessions. We had one today at the library from 4 to 5. Homes Fund kind of helped us coordinate that, and we had stakeholders in, and had a good dialogue and discussion, and got some feedback. And tomorrow, we're going to do a second one, the Durango Senior Center, um, over lunch, noon to 1. Sheila Casey's helping us coordinate that. So we'll go in for our second application, June 1st, it's due, and notifications will be announced in September. And if, uh, we're, we're successful, we will, uh, break ground in the summer of 2019, and bring the building online in 2020. So I just want to thank you again for your continued support and partnership. Are there any questions?
No, we'd just like to thank you for the project, and we recognize there's a huge need in Durango for housing and for seniors, and, uh, we wish you the best.
And we were, you know, just reiterate for our two new colleagues, uh, that we did, or, but you weren't here last year, when we, we actually went through approving the lease option that underlies this, this application, uh, as we did for the, um, Housing Solutions Project as well this year. Uh, we wish you the, we wish you success sooner rather than later.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for traveling to Durango.
And Mr. Mayor, I would like to introduce Travis Priest, please. He is CEO of a new financial technology startup company here in Durango called Obsidian. And I asked Mr. Priest to come and speak at our City Council meeting during public participation, because this is a local company that supports our local businesses, supports our local nonprofits, adds jobs to our community, and serves as a hedge against money going out to companies outside of our community, um, or funding going outside of our community. So I wanted him to speak, it's a very easy model, and he uses a Think Local card, and you can swipe it out, he'll tell you all about it. But I met with him, and I was very intrigued, um, so I wanted him to come give you an introduction.
Thank you. This has been a project that's been in the works for quite a few years. Durango, like other municipalities in Colorado and even nationwide, face the constant battle of revenue versus expenses, and where does the extra revenue come from? Unfortunately, residents in the community don't often know that their purchase decisions may have a big impact on local revenue streams. For instance, when every purchase that you make at Amazon and that box comes to your door, is revenue that leaves the community and money that doesn't come back. And it's not something that residents typically think about, we don't, we, we go for convenience, we think, oh, it's the ultimate lowest price. And by shopping for the lowest price, we often don't see the hidden costs that go into paying for the road maintenance, not having the resources to support our community and things like that. So the ultimate low cost winds up not being the lowest cost at the end of the day, because the money is leaving the community and not recirculating here locally. So what we've done is, we're a financial technology startup, we spun out of Mercury Payment Systems. So Mercury acquired my company back in 2012, and I moved to Durango from sunny Florida. Could not be different, and I couldn't be happier to fall to Durango home, I love it here, and would like to retire here. Um, so I'm glad to see housing being built for those occasions later. The product that we've developed is a replacement for your debit card. It links to your bank account, and you use it just like your debit card throughout the community. However, there are a couple of differences. One, we educate you on the, um, intelligence of your decisions. So when you shop local, we tell you how much of a difference that made to the local community in tax revenue and recycled money. When you shop non-locally, we'll let you know, but, um, it is a reality. Amazon is a reality, it will be here, we will still use it. So the idea is to educate moderately the community on how to use it intelligently. The card also, we partner with local nonprofits, like San Juan Citizens Life Alliance, Habitat Humanity, or, um, or whatever, within the community. And, um, residents who use the card can choose to round up their pennies on each transaction that go donated to these nonprofits. So it's a, it's a hand-in-hand relationship, they help us promote the card and announce to the community that it's here, and in return, we round up to those, um, nonprofits, and we help educate the consumers in the area why it's good to shop local, and when they can't, what intelligent decisions they can make. Um, so, financial startup, I've been working on this for three years. Um, so once Bantam acquired Mercury, I stepped aside and started working on this, so it's been a three-year, um, effort to bring this to market. We have launched in Durango as our first community, and as all startups, we have plenty of problems to work through, and we're working through those. We hope to launch in Boulder and Grand Junction, and Farmington, and a couple other communities within the, say, next two to three months, as we work through our issues, and then slowly roll this out nationwide. Working with over a dozen nonprofits here in Durango right now. Um, and we're applying for funding from OEDIT as part of the, um, IT grants, and doing, you know, what it takes to get off the ground. So I hope that the community finds this a worthwhile product and can support local Pintech as we work to make this happen.
So how do we get this card now? I've seen a few, uh...
Thank you.
Oh, yes, so you visit our website, and I, I'll leave you a card, I'll leave a few cards on the table. You visit our website, the application process is very simple. You, um, give us your name and address, and birthday and self-security number, so we can prove that you're not a money launderer. And once we do that, we just connect the card to your bank account, and you use it instead of your bank-issued debit card. So it couldn't be easier, there's no credit check, there are no other requirements other than being a US citizen over the age of 18 and not being a money launderer.
So basically, tapped into our existing accounts?
Correct.
We don't have to establish any new ones?
It's not a credit card, it doesn't issue you credit, there's no credit check, um, there's no income requirements, you just want to get to a bank account and use it in place of your debit card.
Sounds like a no-brainer.
Yes.
Is it obsidian.com?
It is thinklocalcard.com.
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 Okay.
And when you go there, you can choose Durango as your community, pick your favorite nonprofit to support, and link it to your bank account and shop.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your presentation and also for what you're doing. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council tonight? Seeing none, I will move on to council reports and actions.
I'll go first, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. Um, I just wanted to announce the upcoming Mayor's Ball, which is a second annual event. It is on Saturday...
Former Mayor's Ball.
Oh, sorry, I corrected my...
The third act of annual...
The third, wow. Do you guys want to, do you guys want to be... Do you guys want to, do you guys want to be a member? Tough crowd. Former Mayor's Ball, and it is the official second annual and unofficial third annual event, Saturday, April 28th, at 6:00 p.m. to 10:30 at the Powerhouse Science Center. Live music by Hayden Woolford and the High Beams, and there will be some beverages there, food, and all that good stuff, and it's a benefit for the KSUT Capital Campaign, so that we can continue to have public radio in our community.
Ms. Mayor, I'm the liaison for the library, and I had probably the most overdue library fines in my high school. So I'm going to encourage everyone out there to pay their overdue library fines. Our library needs your nickels and dimes. Also, we have a library champion, and if you go online, you can nominate someone that you think has really served our Durango library well. The nominations are due by May the 31st. Also, there is a May 19th Home Buyers Class sponsored by the Homes Fund. It's at Fort Lewis from 8:30 to 4:30. They're going to teach first-time home buyers about credit scores, maintenance, debt, closing costs, all the information that a brand-new home buyer really will benefit from. Also, there is a meeting tomorrow here at 3:30. I believe it's at City Hall, and that concerns the sit-and-lie ordinance. And if you would like to come to it and give the staff your feedback, they will be reporting back to the city council on April 24th at our study session. And that's all I have, Mayor.
I attended the Public Engagement Community Forum Number Two last night with councilors Dean Broke and Dick White. This was the second community forum to engage our community. It was a well-attended event here at City Hall. Just want to remind everyone out there that our staff is working very hard in this public engagement process to engage with the community. We are hosting four forums. This was the second of four. The goal of this massive public engagement effort is to reach out to the community, gather your input, and help us prioritize visions, values, and plans for the future. I did hear a lot of great comments last night from those who were in attendance, and our Assistant City Manager Amber Blake did a great job leading and facilitating our discussions. So far, our public engagement team has conducted over forty-five workshops and presentations, and they have received over 2,050 comments. So we are getting great response to this effort. I would like to encourage everyone to please try to attend the third and fourth forums. The third is May 17th at Scott Brewing Company, and the fourth is Monday, June 25th at Carver Brewing Company. Both of them are from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We also, in same with this, in regards to this effort, have a community satisfaction survey online. You can go to durangogov.org and hit the tab for Virtual City Hall. We would love your feedback. Annual Arbor Day Celebration is this Friday at 10 o'clock at the Rec Center. North Main Cleanup Day is also this Friday from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Meet at the Fairgrounds. Coffee and donuts to start, and then get to work cleaning it up. Just in time for our main event, which you all know is Thursday, or this Saturday, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., from the 26th to 30th block of Main Street, which is a really great family event. There will be live music, there will be food, there will be games, there will be, I believe, a Slack line, all sorts of fun things, I hope, to see people down there. And then one more informational plug for Mayor's Youth Advisory Council is holding their annual youth expo. And this is a great opportunity for teens to get information and learn about activities in their community, job opportunities, volunteer opportunities, internships. This is May 2nd, Wednesday, at Buckley Park from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. That's it. Thanks.
Well, thanks. I'm going to miss a few things. I'll be leaving town tomorrow to go to Kalispell, Montana, do a little surveillance of the Glacier International Airport while I'm up there. I'll be missing the Airport Commission meeting, but I'll call in. And yeah, my job up there is to do very similar, sixty-eight units of senior housing, low-income housing tax credits, and I'll be doing an inspection for the twenty-five percent completion of that project in Kalispell. So it's a great program, and we need more of it, and hopefully, we can get both phases of your project done here. That's all I got.
Okay. Because that leaves it up to me. I've got a few announcements to make. One, the Coffee with the Mayor has ended for now. I will, however, be resuming my here-to-hear sessions at the same time and place, the Steaming Bean at 9:00 a.m. on Thursday mornings. However, I will not be able to do that again until May 3rd. I will be out of town this Thursday for reasons I'll explain in a moment. And next week, the city council is having its annual retreat. Past events, last week, I attended the Southwest Water Conservation District Water Seminar at the Doubletree, and that was, as usual, very informative about water issues, including the issues of disruption of infrastructure by natural events, including fires and floods that were experienced on the Front Range. That was very timely for me, because what I am doing this week is going to the EarthX Exposition in Dallas, where I will be serving on two panels, one of which is for the presentation by the Compact of Colorado Communities to a group of Texas communities who we are hoping will follow in our footsteps in organizing around climate protection across the state. And there's also a second symposium. The first one's on Friday morning, the second one's on Saturday morning. The second one is about climate resilience, and I will be on a panel discussing recovery and how one builds plans for resilience into recovery. And I've got some examples from Durango and from Front Range communities. And in fact, I've gotten some terrific information from the Governor's Office and some other sources. So I've got a little homework to do between now and Saturday. I also, looking back on last week, I want to congratulate the Durango Public Library on a wonderful library week. I attended two of the events, one of which was a reading by Jonathan Thompson on Wednesday night from his new book, The Valley of, River of Lost Souls. It is, he read one chapter, I think it was the gentlest chapter. He also gave a Green Business Roundtable talk at lunchtime, where he was talking about the darkest, darker side of the environmental issues that have and continue to face our city and our region. That room was full for that. Unfortunately, Friday, or Wednesday, Thursday night, there was a documentary film about Wendell Berry and the impact of industrial agriculture on rural Kentucky. That unfortunately was attended by only a couple of dozen people. It's a wonderful documentary, and others who may have read Wendell Berry, he is a marvelous writer and has simply captured those impact of industrializations on rural America. It was really, I just commend the library staff for putting together all of the events that they had during the week. Other things I need to mention, would like to mention are that city council has voted to include a recycling surcharge on utility bills. We're reluctant to do this, but what's happened is that China has essentially closed their markets to recycle, recycling, and they basically have been taking half of the world's recycling, causing a, essentially, a pileup of recycled material in the United States. So the bottom has dropped, bottom has dropped out of recycling markets. We are now having to pay a surcharge for every truckload of material that we take to Albuquerque, which is where our recycler is. And unfortunately, to keep that program intact, we hope that this will be, in fact, a temporary charge until the market recovers. But we understand that that's another little hit, monthly hit on everybody's bills. The other thing that's come up is that there's a new, number one, new list of best home-based cities for adventure enthusiasts, conducted by livability.com, and Durango came out as number one, which is another kudo. Finally, I have been deeply honored to serve as Mayor of Durango for the last twelve months. It has been an exceptionally busy time and sometimes exceeding difficult. Those of you who haven't noticed, there are some protest signs in the back of the room, and I will have a comment about them in a moment. But it's been a very, very difficult time, and I want to thank my colleagues for your dedication to the city and our collective dedication to civil discussion. I want to thank staff for their hard work and their commitment to making Durango the very best community that it can be. I get emotional about this. I believe the city clerk is very conscientious about such moments.
She's amazing.
We do appreciate it. And happy birthday, Amy.
Thank you.
And I also want to thank the community, and that includes the folks who are holding signs in very civil fashion in the back of the room tonight. I really want to thank all of the members of the community for your engagement and all of the deliberations we have about our common future. Some of them are really hard, and none is, has been harder than the homelessness issue. It is not done. We will continue to struggle with it. We will try to work with the whole community to deal with this issue as humanly as we can, as we look for the safety of the whole community. And with that, the next item on the agenda is the election of the mayor for the 2017, 2018, 2019.
I think we could have a round of applause for our outgoing mayor. Well, I would nominate Sweetie Marbury, Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll second. Are there any additional nominations? I would entertain a motion that we elect Sweetie Marbury mayor of Durango by affirmation.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? I don't think we need a roll call.
Aye.
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 And for Mayor Pro Tem, do we have a nomination?
I nominate Melissa Youssef.
I'll second.
Are there any further nominations? I would entertain a motion for election of Melissa Youssef as Mayor Pro Tem.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I believe, it's not formally on the agenda, but I believe it is customary at this time that we adjourn, we recess for a small celebration. Thank you all.
Remember, this service is paid for by city residents and is only for those who reside in the city of Durango. Anyone illegally taking advantage of this service will be fined. The city of Durango will be increasing enforcement of illegal dumping. Anyone who suspects illegal dumping activity is encouraged to report it to 385-2900. An illegal dumping violation can carry a fine of up to $1,000. During spring cleanup, city residents can dispose of large household and yard items that will not fit in their weekly trash can. This includes tree trimmings and branches less than eight feet in length, bagged or boxed loose brush and leaves. Also, furniture, carpeting, tiles, drywall, open and dried paint cans, large appliances, and more. Items the city cannot accept include concrete, rocks, bricks, dirt, tree stumps, televisions, and other electronics, batteries, hazardous waste, including liquid paint and creosote treated wood, and tires. Services are available through the Potters County as well as city residents year-round at the Transfer Center located at Tech Center Drive. For a fee, you can dispose of large items such as mattresses, couches, dried paint, furniture, carpet, remodeling debris, trash, trees, sheds, and so on. Also, for a fee, the Bondad Landfill just east of Bondad on County Road 310 will accept almost anything, including an entire house, dead animals, RVs, boats, large rocks, tree stumps, concrete. Neither location accepts hazardous materials, televisions, refrigerators, air conditioners, or electronics. The City of Durango Recycle Center on Tech Center Drive will accept televisions and electronics for a fee to be recycled. Washers, dryers, vehicles, and anything else metal can be sold for recycling directly metals. At 33399 East US Highway 160 East in the Florida River Valley, they usually will pay you a small fee for your metals. For city residents, large appliances such as refrigerators or air conditioners are picked up once a year and recycled or properly disposed of. Appliance stores also provide disposal options for all residents. The city offers special pickups for city residents for $90 plus additional fees year-round. This can be scheduled through River City Hall by calling 375-4861. Remember, if your residence is not in the city limits, don't risk a fine during spring cleanup. Use the recycle and transfer center at 710 Tech Center Drive. And if you suspect illegal dumping in your neighborhood, please call 385-2900 immediately. To view maps of spring cleanup pickup areas, dates, and more information, go to durangogov.org/cleanup. Spring Cleanup, a service of the City of Durango. Spring Cleanup, a service of the City of Durango.